I'm moving in early. All right, hey, welcome, everybody. Let's call to order the Oakland Town Commission meeting for August 26, 2025. Please stand for the pledge or remain standing. Thank you. Good evening, Kathy.
Hey, good evening. Commissioner Keller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Satterfield. Mayor Taylor.
I'm here.
Commissioner Ramos is absent. Commissioner McMullin.
Okay. With that, we're going to, we got three presentations tonight. We're going to start with a proclamation. National Preparedness Month. We'll read that real quick here. Whereas the month of September is recognized as National Preparedness Month and creates an opportunity for every resident of the town of Oakland to prepare their homes, businesses, and communities for emergencies and natural disasters. And during an emergency, every second counts. And emergency preparedness programs educate individuals and families on how to prepare before, during, and after a disaster. And these programs address threats of severe weather, terrorism, other potentially life-threatening circumstances to make our communities better prepared, resilient, and safer. And emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every resident and all town of Oakland residents are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. And all of town of Oakland residents are encouraged to participate in preparedness activities and become more prepared by making a plan, building a kit, and staying informed. Now therefore, I, Shane Taylor, by virtue of the authority vested me as mayor of the town of Oakland, Florida, on behalf of the entire town commission, do hereby proclaim September 2025 in the town of Oakland as National Preparedness Month. Been lucky we haven't got hit with a hurricane yet. Oh, sorry. All right. The next one is Labor Day, which is Monday. Labor Day, Monday. Town halls close Monday, right? Monday, yeah, okay. Whereas Labor Day is a time-honored tradition in the United States dedicated to recognizing the invaluable contributions of American workers whose dedication and hard work have built and sustained our nation's economy and prosperity. And the town of Oakland, Florida is deeply committed to celebrating the achievements of our local workforce, acknowledging the vital role that workers in all industries play in ensuring the continued growth and success of our community. And Labor Day also serves as a reminder of the importance of fair and equitable working conditions, right to a safe workplace, and the continued need to advocate for the rights and well-being of all workers. And the town of Oakland is proud to honor the men and women who contribute tirelessly to the strength, vitality, and well-being of our community and to reflect on the progress made in the pursuit of labor rights and the work that still lies ahead. And as we gather to celebrate this Labor Day, we recognize the diversity, dedication, resilience of our workforce, and we commit to supporting initiatives to promote, that promote job creation of fair wages and opportunities for all. Now therefore, I, Shane Taylor, by virtue of the authority vested me as mayor of the town of Oakland, Florida, and on behalf of the entire town commission, do hereby proclaim September 1, 2025 as Labor Day. And the town of Oakland, I urge all citizens to join the recognizing and celebrating the valuable contributions of workers in our communities and across our nation. Happy Labor Day, everybody. Weekend. Next on the list is, we've, last meeting, we talked a little bit about Waste Pro and the series of emails that the commission received, and I think Facebook posts that were out there about trash and the amount, a number of trash pickups a week and twice a week, or recycling and all that stuff. So we heard you, and what we're doing is we've asked Waste Pro to come tonight and kind of talk to us a little bit about that issue. And we shared with them the comments that we were getting from residents. Actually, met with them briefly on Mon- Friday last week and talked to the Waste Pro staff about the concerns and stuff. So we've asked them to come in tonight and maybe give a presentation on, on what we can do and answer any questions that you guys may have as well. So we're going to open it up to you guys to ask whatever questions or concerns you have. So please.
Good evening, Mayor, commissioners, staff in town. Thank you all for showing up tonight. I'm here with, my name is Platt Loftus. I'm the Government Affairs Director with Waste Pro Florida. I'm here with Regina Coronia. She's our illustrious division manager. She is not only a 30-year veteran in this industry, she's somewhat of a local hero in the solid waste community of central Florida. She's laughing at me. At any rate, she's, she knows the town very well. She used to work for the company that had this solid waste contract before the current agreement. So she knows you guys well. So in a nutshell, just to kind of catch everyone up to speed here, in June of last year, this contract went out to bid. Four respondents submitted proposals the following month. That was Waste Management, who was incumbent, FCC, Coastal Waste, and Waste Pro. And the Solid Waste Commission found that Waste Pro was the most respondent and the best value. Now, in the bid, there were two options. There was a once-a-week option and a twice-a-week option. The town had, I'm gonna step away from this if that's okay.
The town had been utilizing twice-a-week options. And he got very aggressive with the one. Reason for that was we were just coming out, COVID prices were spiking, raw materials were spiking, overall price, labor, steel, rubber, diesel fuel, fuel, insurance, everything was just getting out of it. So what we did is we really got aggressive with the once-week proposal with the idea that we could present to town.
Hey, Platt, Platt, I'm sorry. Could you just speak in that because there may be people.
Absolutely.
I mean, just, I know, don't, yeah. Yeah, thanks. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So at any rate. Well, what, so any, that's where we are. We're at a once-a-week option, and that's what we decided to go aggressively with. And that is what the Solid Waste Commission decided to vote for or cited or recommended. Fast forward about six months later, the contract began in February of '06. And knock on wood, it's, the contract is going very well from a service standpoint. We understand that the prior or previous hauler had had some hiccups and service issues. And from what I understand, we're doing quite well from a collection service issue. Now, with that being said, we're on the downside of summer, and there have been some concerns or issues in regards to heat as it relates to maggots and heavy scent. So we met with the mayor and staff to address these issues, and we think we came to a somewhat pretty good agreement of things that we need to recommend to the town. So before I lay everything out, I would like to open it up, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor, to the town to see if, what issues are there? And please, raise your hands, let me know. That's what we're here for. We have the expert here, Regina. And, and we're more than welcome to, to address any issues. Please. Oh.
I came up here, you have. And Jill, you have to tell us who you are because we don't know.
Jill Cox, 301 North Walker. My question is, do we really, does recycling really get recycled? Because when a garden got rid of it, I know Tampa, there was a study guy that put air tags in the recyclable and it all went to the garbage. And that's, I don't recycle because I've seen them throw the recycle, the company before, throw it in the garbage truck. So I'm just asking, is it truly getting recycled?
The answer is yes, most definitely. And not only is Oakland's recyclables getting recycled, contamination is a very prevalent thing here in central Florida, but Oakland's recycling output is very, very clean. And what happens when the load gets contaminated, so to speak, is primarily due to organics such as food waste, wet waste, plastic bags. And we found, we haven't done a formal evaluation yet of Oakland's recycling, but we found it to be very clean. So yes, it is getting recycled. And it is, is, it's at the top of the food chain in terms of Orange County municipalities. Yes. You guys are doing a good job. Just, I do recommend you recycle. It is getting recycled.
Sammy Pettitella, 28, Oakland Point Circle. Just to, I agree with Jill on that about the recycling. I never, I hear all kinds of stories that it's never getting recycled. I'd like to know what that process is, where it goes, how it gets, where it gets transferred, all of that. But also, it's, we have to rinse things out in order to get that clean recycling that you like as well. So our water supply in Oakland is kind of limited, and it's expensive as well, you know? So it's work for us to put it there. So at least let us know that it's definitely getting recycled. It's, if we could go to twice a week trash pickup and maybe stop the recycling altogether, or maybe only do recycling every other week since it's clean, you know? We're talking about Amazon boxes, lots of those, and, and our clean cans and things like that. So I'm just wondering if that's another option. I do appreciate what the committee has done with their time and effort to research this and put this all together. Can't please everybody all the time, is, I know that. Just a couple of.
I'm gonna bring Regina up here. There's no better expert to address.
Good evening, everybody. Yes, it does get recycled. We bring it to a recycler, recycler where they actually sort it. They sort plastics, aluminum, the cardboard and paper. There's not much commodity for glass right now, so they do throw the glass out at the recycler if there's glass in there. We usually ask everybody, just keep the glass out for now until the commodity gets better. The reason why maybe the previous hauler mixed it all together was they have a recycler and they have solid waste disposal sites. Waste Pro doesn't have any sites. So we actually take it where it belongs, and we give it to the recycler for free. And they sort it, and then they break it down, they bail it, and then it goes to a mill and they sell it. Now, we will guarantee that it is recycled because Waste Pro just August 1st bought a recycled MRF. We feel that much about it, that we believe in it, and we bought a company that actually has a sorting line. And at some point in the next nine months, when we transition altogether as one happy family, we will start sorting ourselves and bailing it and sending it out. So it, we can guarantee that does go to a recycle center. And then we'll, we'll sell it to the mills ourselves rather than let someone else do it for us. The processing charge for recycling is extremely high. There's three different ones around town. They go from $175 a ton to $95 a ton. And the middle one is like $140 a ton. If you landfill it, it's, it's going up in October to $54 a ton. So a lot of people just trash it because it's cheaper, right? And a lot of people, the cost is very important to them, and it costs money to recycle. I remember back in the day in the 90s when they first started recycling, and it was free, right? People always said, oh, recycling is free. It really was never free because there's a processing charge to that, but they didn't charge us to recycle. And as the years have gone on, it's more money to dispose of recycling and sell it than it is to, you know, landfill it. But it does get recycled, and we will eventually, in, within a year, we'll start recycling it ourselves.
Anyone else? Please. Thank you, Vance, love us while we're here.
Hammerstein, 306. How do we stop flies and maggots?
Okay. So in the heat, it's gonna bring the bugs, it's gonna bring the flies, and it's gonna create maggots. Maggots are gonna create flies, right? One, bag the trash, right? Once the trash is bagged, tie it up tight and put it in the cart. Close the lid completely. There is another fail-safe. If you have bleach at the house, you know, cleaning bleach, put it on a rag, wipe the top of the cart, the inside of the cart, and around the lid of the cart, those maggots will die instantly once they touch the bleach. And you could also use wasp spray. If you just spray around the rim of the top of the lid of the cart, they die instantly as soon as they, they come in contact with that wasp spray. Bleach, ammonia, wasp spray, and, and really a lot of any kind of bug spray, but I, I like the wasp spray the best. But in, in, once it starts to get hot, you know, if you just wipe that down every other week or something, you should be fine. But the trick is to bag it and, and tie the bag tight when you put it in there. Sometimes if you see a couple, if you don't like the smell, you see a couple of bugs, spray it down after service. Just take a garden hose and just spray it down, and then just wipe it with the bleach, and it should keep the bugs out. You know, we talked with the, with the mayor on Friday, and, you know, twice a week versus once a week, and, you know, what does everybody want to do? You know, they had some complaints, and, you know, we, we talked through the twice-a-week and once-a-week. I mean, the town mascot just went out for bid for twice-a-week service, and it's $38 a house, right? And we, right now with, with the town, it's 24. If we go there twice a week, it's gonna be somewhere around $34, $35. It's gonna go up, you know? And that, when people on fixed incomes, that's a lot of money, you know? $10 more a month. So we're trying to, to be respectful of, of everybody and conscious of the cost. You know, if we can save some money, we will. But it will be costly to change out the service that we just changed in, in, in February. I, I suggest we wait it out, go a year, see how it is. And if it's just a few months in the summer, and we can do some remediation, if, if it really becomes a bad habit at somebody's house, because I know some of the HOAs would have to keep it in the garage, you know? A smaller container, maybe two smaller containers, you know? Just make sure that lid is closed tight. And if you can get through the summer, once the heat is gone, you won't see the bug.
John again. The lid is tight, but it does not seal tight. So water and bugs still can get in it. One, we bag all our trash, tie it, and I've still had problems with flies and what they.
If I could get your address, I'll swap it out and get the different lid, because the lid should close.
Should be nesting right over the lid.
There should, should not close completely. So if it's not.
It's, it's called nesting. It should just go right over. It's totally closed. And, and on a personal note, I, I'm like, folks, I set my trash out once a week. I bag it, I tie it, make sure lid is nested. I walk by it maybe four times a week, and I, I don't have any issues. I did have maggots at one time. I really cinched down with that bag. I mean, I really tied it to where it was, because I have no more maggots. Yeah, that would be a, we've ordered all our carts removed. Try this, and let's, everybody. Well, then maybe we need to get you a new cart. Get you something that can nest a little bit better. Just give us your address.
Yeah, we got that.
Hey, you gotta, you gotta come up to the mic. I'm sorry. Because there, there will be people that will re-watch this, believe it or not, and, and they can't hear anything. Then they'll be calling and yelling and complaining.
So it's Sammy Pettitella, 28, Oakland Point Circle. But anyway, the bags and the bleach and the bug spray and whatever it is that you're gonna spray in there and wash it out and hose it out, that's stuff we didn't have to do before, and those things cost money. You know, I had somebody suggest on Facebook to put it in a Ziploc bag and put it in my freezer. I'm, I mean, I mean, if somebody's doing that, good for them, but I'm not about to do something like that. So I mean, you're, you know, it's just, I mean, not that it's a whole lot of work, but it's stuff that we didn't have to do before. And, and it's still, you know, I, it's in my garage. It's Florida, it's hot. I don't, you know, December, it's still hot and there's bugs. And so I don't know how we're gonna, you know, think that winter, you know, it probably won't be as bad in the winter, but still, you know? And then bugs get in your house. I mean, we've had, I opened my garage door and flies are coming in my house, and I don't know if roaches are going through that or what. And you can't keep it outside. First of all, most of the HOAs won't allow you, but there's so many critters around here. You can't keep anything outside. There's coyotes and raccoons and squirrels, everything gets, gets at it. I know, they're, you know, they're all over my yard all night.
Jeff Sandy, 90 Demmons. What about a vinegar spray of some form? Spray that. What about a mothball every beginning after trash day? Throw a mothball in? You think that might work?
I don't know about the mothball. Vinegar spray, that, that, that is. I don't know about the mothballs.
No, it's, it's a trial. Well, I was just thinking, either the, maybe the trash guy had that on for the cost, and when they dump it, throw a mothball in. See, you know, I just, I throw it out. No, I was just, it's just a way of wait until next time, and then the mothball gets dumped. And only during the, the hot months.
It's Polly.
Polly Bowler. I wasn't gonna say anything, but I'm just trying to figure it out. And then I thought about it. It could be because we're dealing with the maggots because it's so hot. But I'm, I put it in a trash bag and I tie it up and I throw, throw it in there. And then when I go to roll it out, which I'm not going to touch it because of the fact that, you know, the bugs are crawling and it's so bad. But you've said, so you gave me some ideas and I'm gonna try it. And I have an email address and I'm gonna email you, you know, to say, hey, this didn't work because it, it's, it's crazy because today was trash day, and I almost lost it when it was time to take it to the curb because it was so. But we just have to, I'll, I'll try what you've said and we'll go from there because let me tell you something. I'll be calling and emailing, but I've got numbers. Yeah. You know, just so that we can know what, how to take care of that, that's it.
Yeah, you brought up a good point, and I'm glad you brought this up, which is, if you haven't, if you're having issues, contact Waste Pro Direct. Because it, if you contact the town, then the town's gonna call them, call Mike, and then Mike's gonna pick the phone up and call them. So your fastest thing is to go to Waste Pro Direct. I think their number is.
There's a card, they'll pass cards out.
Yeah.
They have it, so if you want it, they'll give it.
Yeah, yeah.
So I wanna say, change is hard sometimes. I've, I've been doing this 30 years here in Florida, and Orange County had 298,000 residents back in 2016, and they went from twice a week to once a week. And honestly, we struggled through a lot in those, in those beginning years. And I mean, years, it took probably three years for a lot of people to just settle down. I don't want you to wait three years. We can come up with a solution, honestly. You have 1,800 approximately homes here, and we can, we can come up with a solution for you. But before the commission goes and, and says, let's just go back to twice a week, let's just try a few things. let's just try a few things and and see if it it works, before they make that final decision and get through our first summer and see how bad is it really, and then go from there. But we're willing to work with you guys. If I need to swap out a cart, I'll swap the cart out, I have no problem with that. Clean what you have, and because the the truth is, once you do get the maggots, you really have to clean that cart, because even if there's one left, they can multiply. So it it's really important to clean that cart after you do have them and get rid of them, just because. And 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 it is, you know, pain, I know it, but it it can be worked through.
I just had a quick question. Fortunately, I'm not having this problem, but I want to be sensitive to everybody. But one of the things I was just thinking about was if you have the lid closed, if you like, if you just had something you could set on top of it to make sure that, I mean, just, it doesn't have to be something super heavy, but because again, as long as nothing can get in there, you shouldn't have a problem, and you shouldn't have to do all the extra measures of, you know, all that other, you know, bleach and things like that. But like, if you just put something somewhat heavy on the lid to make sure that it's good and down, that you could easily take off and roll it out, so that again, it's not a lot of extra steps, you're not having, because again, once you, if you don't have the problem and you get it remedied, then you're good, but.
I've seen people use a bungee cord and they just bungee it down, but then they got to unbungee it every time. I've seen people put a box on top, just, you know, just put.
Like I said, I don't think it needs to be anything super heavy.
But seals.
Right.
You know, and sometimes the heat could warp it a little bit, and and that's why I said, if you want to, I'll swap out your cart, because it could just be from the heat, where it's just warped a little bit, and then you can get a new one and it and it'll sit fine. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Real quick, one last, okay, yes, sir.
Scott Rann, three oh five Edge Grove. I guess I'm the odd man out, and I'm going to congratulate you guys for a great job. One of the nice things that I did see around our neighborhood is recycling has doubled on my street because of the carts. It's a lot easier to put it in the cart than to put it in the green can. Personally, some tips, if you've got something that's really gooey and disgusting, throw it out. If it takes two seconds to rinse and use a little water, rinse it. But paper, cardboard, plastics, you know, water bottles, all that stuff can be recycled, keeps it out of the landfill for our future generations. So that's a good reason for everybody to recycle. So the other thing about the cans is when you you all collected everybody's cans from the community, there were lots of leftovers over here. So I came and picked up a couple for Yardways, because I didn't have large rolling cans. So there's a huge difference in people's cans that you could tell used either heavy bags or the people that threw trash in them, because some of those were disgusting, and I'm sure they had maggots and flies. So just like we have to clean up around the home, you got to clean your trash can every once in a while. There was, it, you know, I couldn't even tell you what was in the inside of some of the ones that were there. But we don't have any problems. No, I didn't pick those. Actually, I did, I got two for somebody else and I scrubbed them out. Bleach and a brush, let water sit them, and they're clean as new. I gave two to my friend, because they were all free.
Thank you. Anybody on the table have any comments or questions? So what we'd like to do is continue how we have that currently set up right now. Let's go through that year period. And and again, those people who spent the time on the on the committee, we appreciate that. As as Tammy said, we really appreciate your your effort in doing that and reviewing and being good stewards of of the costs that are associated with the trash pickup. And and you keep in mind that every year, there's a cost increase that goes up on trash. It's just, it's a CIP that continues to go up. But what what we what we should do is just continue this path on, we're we're coming out of the the summer months. Hopefully, it won't be that bad, but if it continues and it does, this happens, then we can certainly go back and reevaluate and figure out, okay, should we just go back to two days? Or is one day good or what? So if everybody will kind of just, let's let's do that way right now, and then let's reevaluate when the next contract, A- A- April or February? So February, we can kind of just go through again, April, February, March, and and go through again. Okay? Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Regina Platt.
Sir.
Okay, moving right along, and thank you, everybody who 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 had questions and and spoke up. Moving on to the consent agenda, it's on a consent agenda tonight is our minutes from the eight twelve twenty twenty five Town Commission regular meeting. The Oakland Avenue Charter School out of field teacher assignments was in your packet. Sidewalk easements on East Oakland Avenue that was also in your packet. Contract amendment with CPH, a lease agreement for the West Orange Arts and Heritage Center concession area. We'll, I'm sure we'll talk more about that later. And Town Commission holiday meeting schedule and the town holiday closure that are on there. Any questions? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion. Okay, second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, next on the item is our is a couple of resolutions. And the first one is Resolution number twenty twenty five oh seven, and it has to do with the twenty twenty six election qualifying dates. Kathy?
Resolution of the Town of Oakland, Florida, establishing the beginning and ending dates and times to qualify as a candidate for the two thousand twenty six Town General Election and providing for conflicts, air of ability, and an effective date.
Okay, is that you, Lise? Oh, Kathy's going to talk.
This resolution, this resolution is to approve the qualifying dates for the March tenth election for the following dates. To qualify by petition, November seventeenth through December second. To qualify by fee, December third to December eighth. Okay, well, there are three seats, yes, three seats open for this election. Seat one for a four-year term is currently Commissioner Keller's seat. Seat three completing for completing a two-year term is currently Commissioner Ramos's seat. And seat four for a four-year term is currently Commissioner McMullen's seat. Any interested candidates may announce their candidacy at any time by filing forms with me. You do not need to wait for the qualifying dates. If you are interested in running for a seat, please contact me for more information.
Okay, so anybody interested in the next election cycle coming up? Reach out to Kathy if you like to, if you have any questions or or anything about qualifying, just go right to Kathy. So we'll be sharing those dates again on our website as as well. Any questions or comments from the table? Oh, 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 no, no, no. No, if you're going to talk, you got to come up.
Sorry, Polly Bowler again, I just, is there a term limit?
Yeah. Oh, oh, no, no, I'm sorry, there is a four, it's it's a four-year commitment.
So it's four years?
There's, right now.
So like.
No.
Let's say you do four years and then you you're elected again, and you can do another four years?
Right, so there's.
What if it comes to sixteen?
Yeah, you can, because currently our charter, our charter doesn't have anything in that. So there's no term limits in the charter. Does that answer your question? Okay, all right. Okay, any anybody else from the table having questions? Anybody else in the audience have any questions before we move forward? No, hearing none, okay. We'll entertain a motion on that resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty five dash seven, twenty twenty six election qualifying date.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Next resolution is Resolution number twenty twenty five oh eight, and this is amending the town facility rental rates, increasing those.
A resolution of the Town of Oakland, Florida, adopting amended rental model and rates, amended facility rental cleanup policies, and an amended facility rental contract for the town-owned property known as the Oakland Meeting Hall, repealing rental model and rates for the Oakland Meeting Hall, providing for legislative findings, and providing for conflicts, air of ability, and an effective date.
Okay. Any questions or comments anybody has from the table? Oh, did you need to say something?
No, I'm, I can just cover it real quick. So so basically, what we're doing is we're going to full-day rentals on Saturday and Sunday, and evening rentals on Fridays. So basically, two o'clock PM to midnight on Fridays, which has kind of been our policy since COVID. We haven't been doing part-day rentals, we've been doing only full-day rentals. So this just revises our policy. And basically, the Friday rental rates will stay the same, weekend rental rates will increase slightly. And then we're doing also adding in a chair storage fee. So when people bring in their own chairs, it'll provide some funding for our guys to be able to take, because they have to take these chairs all the way over to Public Works, store them, bring them all the way back every time somebody brings in their own chairs. So those are basically the changes with this policy.
I apologize, Lise, I'm sorry, you you even told me, hey, I'm going to say something about it. Just real quick for me, so our, the the new rental days, costs for a full day for Saturdays and Sundays, it's eight hundred dollars per day for a town resident, and the non-residents, a thousand dollars.
That's correct.
What was the original?
So it was four hundred for a four-hour block, six hundred for an eight-hour block for residents. So it's going up to basically six hundred to eight hundred, but they get seven extra hours, so they can have it from nine AM till midnight. So that's fifteen hours, where before they only had an eight-hour block. Non-residents are going, they had five hundred dollars for a four-hour block and eight hundred for an eight-hour block, and that's going to a thousand for the fifteen-hour block.
Okay, and then Fridays were six hundred, or current, you're going to go to six hundred?
Yeah, it's basically staying the same price, they just get, as the eight-hour block, they're just getting two extra hours on Fridays.
Okay, all right. Everybody needs to, so weekdays stay the same, nothing, nothing there.
That's correct.
Any comments or questions from anybody? No? Yes, ma'am.
So I just had a question about the deposit is three fifty for both residents and non-residents. Are we confident that that covers us for most anything, any damage or anything to the building?
That's been covering everything, yes.
Any questions or comments from the audience? No? Okay. Bring it back here and we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept Resolution twenty twenty five oh eight as presented.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you. All right, next is a public comment. If you have anything you'd like to say that's not on the agenda, we invite you to come up. We're going to ask that you keep it to three minutes, and we'll stop you after three minutes. Any takers today? Yes, sir.
My name's Jeff, I live at ninety Demmons. I wanted to check and find out if there was any follow-up on the streets. I know that we got the in the newsletter information that we had success with the fines that were put down on the dirt roads. I think I read that. And but then I started thinking about the resealing of the existing asphalt. Do we want to try to save these roads? Or have they cracked too much in certain areas and can't seal them? That was just something, I don't know if it was ever, it, the people that were here that night, we're going to go take a look at our roads and see if they could possibly extend them a few more years without having to resurface everything. And so I don't know if they did that or what any kind of.
You're talking in your na- in your neighborhood, southern.
Well, yes, going down the main drag, and then as you turn corners onto the streets, you see them starting to crack as you look at the roads. And I was wondering if there was something that a good sealer that could be put down, or has it gone too far?
So I can answer that for you. So in the next fiscal year budget, we have set aside funding for milling and resurfacing of that particular neighborhood as needed. As far as I know, there's no problem with that, but we've, you know, they haven't passed the budget yet for next year. As far as sealing it, that's probably not a good use of material at this point. It's got, it has cracked quite a bit, and then Mill Holland is even, you know, in worse condition.
Like I said, I forgot to write down the other items, maybe back up here. Oh, 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 I remember. I'm excited. The the other question, a long time ago, I mentioned about possibly having Duke somehow extend their service on the new subdivisions to existing subdivisions. I don't know if the infrastructure that they put in for the new houses, if the underground can carry the additional load or not. But that way, we're not relying on Tub Street so much for our service, for our power. Because as you know, we, it's, it's been great recently. I mean, guys have been out there trimming trees, and I mean, it's, it really has made a difference in consistent power service. But I was thinking, you know, we're in the national blah, blah, blah thing. And I was thinking that it might be some way, someone to address this with Duke, because I know if I call.
Right. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll certainly take a look at that.
And it doesn't matter, just a few houses, whoever gets, you know, that additional load would be increased.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so we'll close the public comment and come back to our town manager and department reports.
As the mayor said, town offices will be closed on Monday for Labor Day. I did want to highlight, if you haven't got enough flyer, we have a new upcoming fall event flyer. It was in the packet, but there's a lot of upcoming events that are that are a lot of fun. We have a new exhibit at the Arts and Heritage Center, that's Roots and Memories, that starts September twelfth. We have a Oakland, Town of Oakland Block Party that'll be taking place in front of the Arts and Heritage Center on September nineteenth, and that'll be a lot of fun. Oakland Nature Preserve is having Nature Fest on September twentieth. And then we have Music Under the Oaks on October eleventh, and State of the Town Address with your mayor on October twenty second. So those are just what's coming up in September and October, it's going to be a lot of fun. So hopefully, you can join us and come out and be part of these events.
Eighties and nineties cover band. Music Under the Oaks. They did. Not showing my age, Mike. All right, we'll go around the horn here. Gabby, our finance director, how's it going?
It's going.
Okay.
I'm just working on budget memos.
Budgets, let's talk budgets. So there is a, our scheduled budgets for regular meeting, and in September is coming up on September eighth. I'm looking at this cheat sheet in front of me. The talk about our tentative budget hearing is on September eighth at six, I'm guessing that is a workshop. And then September eight, twenty twenty five at seven during the regular commission meeting, that's a regular commission meeting. And September twenty third is the final budget workshop at six, and then we'll probably talk about it. If we like it on the twenty third and pass it, right? Seven.
Yeah, so on the eighth, we will present to you what we discussed at the original budget workshop back in June. So any suggestions that the commission had or residents had have been applied to the budget, and any updates have been done, so we'll present that to you, Elise and I. And then that's where you guys will have your input, the town residents will have their input. And if any changes need to be made, that's where it will be done before the final budget. So if you guys have anything that you are very passionate about, this is the time to tell me. So, okay?
Please come to the workshop and 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 be heard, so we know how to, what what you want. Yeah, anything else?
That's all I. It is a Monday, it's a Monday, it's not a Tuesday.
And and I'm sorry, and speaking of dates, make, there's a holiday schedule that we talked about that we passed as well. There's a commission meeting that's also on a Monday because of a holiday as well.
Well, and I said it was Labor Day, but it's Veterans Day, that's on November eleventh, so we'll have our November meeting. Our only November meeting will be on November tenth.
That's a Monday. Gabby, sorry, just just confusing everybody, that's all I'm trying to do.
So Monday, September eighth, be there or be square. So Monday, September 8th. Be there or be square.
Okay. Chief? Give me something good, chief.
I have nothing. I have nothing good. I have nothing.
School, school. School, okay. Speeders, nothing?
School.
Traffic enforcement has been plentiful, if you will. We monitor a lot of it today, but it seems like Henshin is now under control. I think, we really don't see many problems.
Right.
The school line, much like every school in Orange County, 20, 25 minute traffic congestion, and it works itself out. We have not had any problems, legitimate problems.
Yeah. And I would like to point out, chief, you did, you did post the, in Winter's Landing, with the, with the neighbors' concerns about speeders coming from Oakland Park and going up to the four-way stop at Oakland Avenue. You did place a, a speed control sign, which was good, because I think that really helped out and slowed people down. I've actually, actually watched it for a little bit. So yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we, we had to return that yesterday to, we borrowed that from Winter Garden Police, but it, we had it for about 40 days. It seemed to work. It was, it was in combination with the enforcement. Got a lot of good feedback from the residents along that, that strip there. But when, when actually monitoring the traffic pattern, it was a very small percentage of people that were going above 7, 7 miles an hour, take 7 miles an hour over the speed limit.
Over the 20.
Yeah, so very, very small. And the school speed zone cameras are in its final stages. We're in that warning period now. We're working through that, but it's, we're working through the software and working through the warning period, but it, it looks like everything will be fine with that.
Great. Thanks, sir. Alright, Public Works, John or Mike, anyone? Time's gonna...
Well, I've got about 20 different things to talk about, but I'll narrow it down. I would like to just, what do you want to call it? Go into the comment about the power and, you know, having the, the new subdivisions, you know, chime in and, and assist us with that. Prior to about three or four years ago, the majority of the energy for Oakland came down Tub Street, Oakland Avenue and Tub Street. But with Oakland Park, I know that Duke Energy did some hardening of the facilities out there, and they ran a new, a brand new high service line, I guess. I'm not an electrical guy. I just saw what they were doing. I don't know what they were doing. But they, they did put in a lot of new equipment, and then they made connections to the grid here, which I believe took about 175 services off the existing grid. So the grid that was typically, you know, going out of power every time the wind blew, about 175 of those homes in the general region were taken off that. So, good thing. So, anyway, for the manager's report, or in this case, I'm gonna call it the roadwork report. I got a quick note regarding the road closure on San Sparilla Road that began yesterday. For those of you who may not know where that is, that's the street running through the Longleaf Neighborhood that connects, they rode 50 to Oakland Avenue. So anyway, the street is closed to through traffic. Everything seems to be going well. This is only day two, and they're, they're installing a stormwater crossing there. And barring any unforeseen issues, that work is scheduled to be completed by this Friday, and that also includes the paving of that patchwork out there. So that's good. So also restoration work has been underway in some areas like Bobcat Chase and that, where they can, they can actually do that. So bottom line, project seems to be moving well. No, no injuries, no deaths, no nothing. And it's, so far it's been really good. Speaking of roadwork, our paving contractor will be coming back to the Oakland Shores neighborhood the week of September 15 to complete the driveways. And we've asked them to install some additional millings on North Arrington Street and make it look like a complete roadwork, you know? Because there is, there was a disparity in the, in the material. And still speaking of roadwork, at the, at the next commission meeting, staff will be bringing to you the final report that spells out the priority street improvements for the next few years. You may recall that a few months ago, Myra Montal presented a PowerPoint that effectively prioritized the next few years of street improvements of the dirt roads. September. And finally, wrapping up the roadwork, the construction of Catherine Ross is progressing at a reasonably good rate. We're all keeping our fingers crossed that they do not encounter any tropical systems, because that, that would definitely delay the work, especially with the crossing of the, the Johns Lake Outfall. So that's a...
That's been worked out, Mike?
What's that?
It's all good. That's worked out?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's worked out. Yeah, we saved quite a number of trees that were slated to be removed. We've managed to, to build, you know, they're building a good road for us. Really gonna work out. Improve the drainage in that area, and then the canal crossing will, will make that a little more, you know, acceptable for public traffic. So, oh yeah, there is one more. The town recently received the final plans for improving the intersection of Canyon Creek, Mackey, and Winter's Landing, where that little three-way intersection is. The next step is bidding and contractors selection, and I anticipate that happening in fiscal year 26, which we're, you know, we're five weeks away from. We've asked the Bentley Group, who did the design for a task order, to assist us with this as any, as well as any project management and post-design services. Construction should take place as early as January or February of 26, where everything comes together.
And that intersection will be closed?
Yeah, yeah.
There's not traffic around to Star or whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions on any of that? And Kathy, anything from you?
Nope, nothing.
All good?
All good, thank you.
Gosh, okay. Okay. Alright, bring him back to the table. Commissioner Keller, do you have anything good?
I just wanted to say that I really enjoyed attending the Florida League of Cities Conference. I don't want to steal too much of your thunder. You probably have things you want to share about it. No. It was, it was great to represent Oakland as the voting delegate, but it was, it was really just great to go to and learn about, you know, as a new commissioner, learning about just general things about town and commission government and meeting other commissioners and council people from other cities. And then really the, the big takeaway for me that I heard over and over throughout the presentations was, you know, Florida League of Cities motto is local voices making...
Local choices.
Local choices, which is their initiative that, you know, that we make the decisions for our towns, not state government and things like that, which, again, it was, it's their, kind of their tagline, but it, it just was something that was reinforced through different things that I, different sessions that I attended. And I think that that's something really important. So I would ask everybody that feels that way to think about that, you know, with upcoming elections and things like that, to make sure that we have the control over what happens in our town. So that was a really great, great opportunity to learn more, and I enjoyed it.
Just to add to that, the conference, that's the end of the fiscal year. So fiscal year for the conference is August to August. So we're in the beginning of the new year. And with that being said, session comes up in, in, in January, and, you know, there's a lot that's gonna be happening in the state of Florida. The league creates committees to put together policies, similar to what Commissioner Keller is saying, so we can be prepared for some of the things that are coming our way. And so having the voice, local voices involved, I'm on a committee that starts in September, is the Development Code Compliance and Redevelopment Policy Committee. About two years ago, I think last year, we submitted a suggestion around impact fees. And so if the town has some other policies that we want to submit to this committee and all the other committees, I know Elise can see all the other committees, we can submit some ideas to the committee. So those committees start in September, October, December. And, you know, as, as Commissioner Keller said, you know, it's always good to be among others to help you grow and help you understand how to be a better elected and learn how to interact with, with the citizens. And it just, it's always a great session. There's always good, good points to learn and bring back. And all our, our goal is to try to represent this town as best as possible. And they, and they gave us the tools. And so, again, you know, we want to be prepared for whatever happens in Tallahassee starting in January. I want to make sure that we continue to collaborate and work together.
I'm gonna add another comment. We've talked about this before. Commissioner McMullin's brought it up, and I've talked about it as well. And it was brought up over and over at that conference. And we've talked about, you know, the state looking at getting rid of property taxes. And one of the things that I, I've said it before in these meetings, and again, it was brought, you know, it's important to us as the commission and the town to communicate to our town, our constituents, what that really means. And they talked a lot about that because, you know, the soundbite is, oh, no more property taxes. But then the other half of it that you're not hearing is, well, like in our town, 50, how much, what is the percentage of our budget is property taxes?
So 70% of our budget is ad valorem, and of that, 50% is residential ad valorem, which is what the state is targeting.
And more than half our budget is police and fire, correct?
That's correct.
So, so if, you know, I know there was a lot of stuff with the Winter Garden just had, where they were gonna do a fire fee, and everybody was up in arms about that. But if for some reason we were to lose property taxes as income for our town, it would be detrimental to Oakland. And we would have to, you know, again, and I know y'all, I know the mayor and Elise went to a meeting where they talked about the fact that, well, we're gonna get rid of property taxes. We're just gonna change and make it a different fee structure. So just, again, I just ask you and compel you to make sure you fully understand things when you get the opportunity to vote, if that's something that becomes a voteable thing, or the people that you're voting for. Because I've, and I've said it to folks here in, in the, you know, in conversations before and after the meeting, that Oakland could cease to exist as we know it if we lost that money. And I think we all love this town. And again, that's why that local voices making local choices is so important. So I would just, you know, again, as you think about different things that may come up, keep that in mind.
If I may, Elise was quiet, but she was in the meeting. She was in the meeting. It was a, it was a 90-minute meeting just talking about property taxes. Well, I know Elise and I were in that meeting.
Yeah, and so, so one of the things, this, this issue is really bothering me, that the state could do this. So, so I actually am part of the tri-county league advocacy team.
Okay.
That's gonna work with FLC to try to message, you know, to our legislators what this means to, there's, there's 411 municipalities in Florida, and the average size is like our size, right? So we're not the only jurisdiction that's dealing with this, but we all need to speak up because, like, like they said, it's detrimental to the existence of Oakland. Like, we will be swallowed up by a bigger municipality if this goes through. So we really need to pay attention. I'm working from my angle to figure out the best way to message this to our, to our residents, right? So that they understand where their tax dollars are currently going and what this would mean, this kind of cut would mean. So look for marketing, you know, in the future on that, as I try to figure out what that looks like. But we'll keep you guys informed. But like Commissioner Keller said, just, just be aware of what you're voting for as, as we go forward.
Did you order that report from?
I did.
Okay. Because the FLC is creating reports for every city in town, and is gonna do the breakdown financially so we can present to all of our citizens what that looks like. And in that, in that meeting we were in, it probably showed about seven, eight cities and towns, and it wasn't pretty, to include Tallahassee. You know, it wasn't pretty as far as they lose those dollars. We have ceased to exist. I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys, thanks for attending too. It was a good event. Mike?
I just have one question. Where are we at with, I asked this a while back, the charter review? And are we going to meet the deadline? What is the deadline for that?
Yes, the deadline is right around October timeframe to get the ordinance to you all. And we have one meeting left, and we're anticipating that to be next month.
And the, I'm sorry. No, no, I just want the charter review, but go ahead.
Yeah, same, just, and everything's on tractors and some of the blocks that, like that.
Yes. Oh, no, we'll make it.
And then that will be presented, right?
Yes.
By a, the board chair or the selected chair?
Right, they'll present it and with the ordinance attached.
Okay. Point to you, Mika.
That's my point to you if you want to, want to. That's my point to you, just in case you wanted to know.
Did a good job. I sat in one of the meetings. It was quite, not, it's quite enlightening to see it, yeah. One thing I, the only thing I have is, I want to share in our, in our consent agenda item was the concession stand that is now occupied by hot dog therapy. If you guys, you know, Saturdays and Wednesdays, you see Hot Dog Therapy and his card out here and stuff. So he's kind of taking it to the next level and has now taken over the concession stand. And we have an agreement in place with him for at least a year to work. So we wish him the best of luck, because if he's successful, we're all successful and the town's successful. You know, he has, obviously has hot dogs, he has smoothies, and he's got, also got ice cream. So he's got the same ice cream that's at Scoops. I'm not bashing Scoops, but it's 50 cents less if you want a cup, if you want to come there and get that. But as, as, you know, talking to, talking to Mark there, as business starts growing, and I think his grand opening is, well, his official opening, he's got soft opening right now, but his official opening September, Tuesday?
I want to, yeah, I want to say it's like the 6th or 7th, something like that.
So he's going to, yeah, that weekend of, so he, he's open now. He's closed on Mondays is what he's gonna be closed on right now, but he's gonna be open every day, and he's gonna give it his all. And I think he's gonna be open from 10 to 5 right now. And if the interest goes, he wants to try to stay open later for, you know, if you get home from work late and you're like, I don't like cooking, hopefully he can start doing that. I told him to start making some chicken salad sandwiches and stuff like that. Yes, ma'am?
He, he changed his, his hours today. He's now open from 11 to 7.
11 to 7, okay. Even better.
So go and get after dinner, ice cream, or, he also has iced lattes, and he puts caramel in them. $4. It's cheaper than Starbucks, and it's really good.
She does have a report.
She does have a report. She's been, yeah, yeah.
Saying.
Yeah.
So we're gonna cut to the chase here. Go down there, see Mark, spend a lot of money and keep him here.
Yeah.
You'll be happy, we'll be happy, he'll be ecstatic.
Yeah. And, and we'll see if we can convince him to stay open to at least 8:30 on Tuesdays when there's a commission meeting, and we can, and Gabby can buy us all an ice cream. And, 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 well, you know, the whole, the whole, you know, the, this is just the beginning. So you hope that he's successful. And then as, as the town goes, I know we, we talked about this a few months ago about, you know, we're relooking at the streetscape of the town, especially Tub Street running down, and trying to entice that commercial to come down through here. So, you know, hopefully that's just one little piece of it, and then it just starts sparking from there. So please, if you get a minute, please go down and, and frequent his business. Bye. Alright. Anybody else? No?
Right, if our hearts, minds, and satisfied, let's adjourn. It is 8:03 PM.
Hey, buddy, run. Four stars.